Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Wilmington School Committee for December 20th, 2023. All members are in attendance with the exception of Jen Bryson. Please rise for the political liberties.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
So, our next item is the high school student representatives, and so this is going to be Nadia Bounoit and Megan Smith. Please join us at the table here.
Hello, and thank you for having us once again. Today I have Megan with me.
Hello.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. So, it's been awhile since we last presented, and since then, our students have been very busy. The Powderpuff game went wonderfully, and the seniors won over the juniors, obviously. On Thanksgiving Day, we had wonderful weather for the Thanksgiving game. We unfortunately lost, but it was still a great game, and everyone did great. Said great a lot. It was actually the 90th game between us and Tewksbury.
The school held a spirit pageant. Alex Kennedy and Molly McDonald did a great job hosting. All of the competitors did wonderful, but congratulations to the winner, Mary Almas. We also had 46 students from the high school receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. This is a merit based from students' performances on the 10th grade MCAS reception. Whoa! Recipients get credits towards tuition at a Massachusetts State College or university.
The counseling office hosted a parent college information night for parents of students planning to attend college. Mrs. Dunlap's sports and marketing class took their annual trip to Gillette Stadium, where they were able to share their marketing projects with the marketing coordinator there.
There were several concerts recently. The chorus held their annual concert on December 5th, and the orchestra held their concert on the 7th, and the band had theirs on the 12th. All the concerts went wonderfully, and they were all very successful. The Molly Wayne Club went to a conference at St. John's Prep. There were topics debated like Supreme Court ethics, war in Israel, and outer space governance.
On the 12th, we had the midpoint of quarter two, and grades have been updated in Aspen by teachers. The Decca Club competed at Dristicks on the 12th and 13th, where 41 students qualified to attend the state leadership conference and competition, where they will compete against students from all over Massachusetts.
Students who take astronomy with Ms. Daley had the opportunity to visit the 5th grade classrooms, where they would read books about constellations to them. Last week, we also had the medical careers club help run a blood drive at the school. There were 36 total donations, which would go to help 110 people.
On the 14th, the strings went and played for the senior citizens at the senior center, and today, the band and soundscape, as well as the chorus class, went and played for them as well. Many college decisions have begun to come out, and some of our seniors have already committed. Cap and gowns will be going out, orders will be going out over break, and students are reminded to purchase them. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Want to comment on the, all the concerts, because that is one of the things that I love about December is all of the concerts, and I tell you, it's like, there is a lot of musical talent in this district, and they are wonderfully entertaining. I also attended the pageant that you spoke to me beginning, this little spirit pageant, and that was a lot of fun, and I also want to give a shout out on that for, and I forget her last name, but I believe there's a girl named Kaylee, who was an important part of producing and putting on that show and making it happen. So, I wanted to also give that call out there. Any further questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Next, we have the review of our fall athletics, and Mr. Ingram.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Okay, I got a slide deck here that we'll run through. Anytime anybody has a question, please feel free to interrupt. Just quickly, fall participation, this school year, we had 306 student athletes, roughly 49% of the school population, and you can see where that trends from the last three years. So, although we do have a smaller enrollment, we have more kids participating in high school athletics, which is great. This is just an overview. I threw this in here just so you guys see. This is the Middlesex League, and it's into two different divisions. The Liberty, L for large, is Arlington, Belmont, Lexington, Reading, Winchester, Woburn. Those are some rather large communities, and the Freedom is what we are in. Commonly, we play the Freedom twice, and we cross over versus the Liberty once. That's how most team schedules are compromised. And right now, we are the smallest school in the Middlesex.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Go ahead.
On that note, how is that determine which of the Liberty teams will be played by the Freedom Division?
Everyone in the Freedom plays the Liberty once, and then everybody in the Freedom plays the Freedom twice. So, you play all of the Liberty schools on a crossover.
Oh, okay. I see. I'm sorry.
But you only play them once, and then every year, it alternates whether it's home or away.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so in our fall season, it's amazing. Our fall season started at the end of August, and it ended on Thanksgiving. It was quite a long season, but it was rather successful. Our cheerleading team placed second in the Middlesex League. They were first in the regional competition at Belrika. They placed fourth in the state competition at Worcester State. Head coach Kylie Bolario. They had two All-Stars, Erin Murray and Lily King, both of which are sophomores. They had a fantastic, fantastic year. Girls cross country, 4-2, third in the Middlesex Freedom League. Head coach Joe Patron. All-Stars Addison Hunt, a junior, Hannah Bryson, a senior, Charlotte Kylie, a freshman. The team qualified for the All-State meet in Fort Devens. They finished 23rd in the race. They were led by Hannah Bryson, who finished 56th individually with a time of 21:30. And also, really cool, this is the first time in the history of the cross-country program that the boys and the girls made it to the All-State meet in the same year. They've made it on different years, but together, they made it this year, which was great. The boys were also coached by Joe Patron, had an All-Star, Jamison Burns, who's a senior. They finished 23rd in the team-state meet, and Jamison placed 84th individually with a time of 17:52. Girls soccer, if anybody wants to get into power rankings, feel free to ask. This is where we'll talk about that a little bit. Girls soccer finished 8, 6, and 4, second place in the Middlesex Freedom. They were 19th in the power ranking. Head coach Alvia Banyas his first year. Allison McGillicott, a sophomore All-Star. Molly McDonald, a senior All-Star. Julia Archer, a senior All-Star. Jill Collins is a junior All-Conference. That means she was top 11 in the whole Middlesex League Freedom and Liberty. In the state tournament, they beat Belcher Town 3-1, which is quite a ride, I can tell you, and then they lost to Hanover 2-0.
Real quick, when you talk about the power rankings, are they statewide?
Statewide power ranking. It's now the system that they go to for team sports. The top 32 teams make it, including anyone who's 500. So, it could be more. There's some sports, we've seen up to 40, 42 teams make the state tournament. Football has a top 16.
Sure.
In the power ranking, there's an algorithm that takes into consideration your schedule, your opponent's schedule, how many goals or points you win and lose by. It's a little controversy with the margin of victory at the high school level. I did not vote for it when it first came by. I was just going to let you know that. But the margin of victory seems like it's going to be adjusted moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Boys soccer, they had a better record than they had last year, but they did not make the playoffs this year, so they had a lower power ranking, believe it or not. So, they had a better record, but a lower power ranking. Head coach Steve Scanlon, they had three All-Stars, Dan Laglana, Remy Elliott, and Aiden Burke. Field hockey, Coach Leanne Ebert, who also teaches in the building, collected her 100th career win. We have a picture of that on the slide. They finished 6, 8, and 4 for 3rd place in the league. They were 27th overall in the power ranking. Senior All-Star, Abigail Hassel. Alexis Melvin was a senior All-Star. Kira Warford was a junior All-Star. In goalie, Alyssa Stack was a senior All-Conference player. The golf team, they were 1-10. First-time coach Mike Maloney, pretty cool here. This is, they won a match this year. It's the first time since 2017, which is 62 matches in a row. They ended that streak. They had a senior All-Star, Bobby Seer. Volleyball, we also had a first-time head coach in Molly Pelletier. They were 3-17 for 4th place in the league, 40th in the power rankings, and their senior All-Star was Annabelle Lozzi. The football team finished 5-5 for 5th place in the Middlesex League Freedom, 16th in the power ranking, and power rankings in football, like I mentioned earlier, 16 is the lowest seed. So, they did make the playoffs in Division 5. Head coach is Craig Turner. Their All-Stars were Dempsey Murphy, a senior All-Star, Michael Lawler, a senior All-Star, Ally Albuka, a senior All-Star, Nick Iscone, a senior All-Star, Christian Febo, a senior All-Star. And they lost in the playoffs at Foxborough High School, not Gillette Stadium. We have student athletes of the month. September, we had Alyssa Stack from field hockey and Michael Lawler from football. October, we had Jamison Burns from cross-country and Jill Collins from girls soccer. And then in November, we had Kelsey McKenzie from Cheer and Ally Albuka from football. Something that we've started and adapted, and it's been supported in the building by Mr. Gendron, is the Wildcats Captain's Council. All right, so this is a seasonal captain council, so we meet with the captains six times during that season. Topics that we go over is leadership styles, behavioral, front porch theory, growth mindset, Pygmalion Effect, some communication stuff, the IKEA effect, some motivation, team chemistry, goal-setting, positive self-talk, and how to handle difficult situations. So, if you see any of the captains, you can pull them aside and say, hey, what is this? What's the IKEA effect? Tell me about it. They'll be able to tell you everything you need to know. But even, we had 8th graders visit the high school night, and that's this picture on the bottom. Those are our senior captains from the captain council, who volunteered to show off and promote how great the high school is.
Good question.
Go for it.
I won't ask you about the IKEA effect, I'll ask them. What is the front porch theory?
Front porch theory. That's one of my favorite things, and I almost put it in this slide deck. Almost every presentation that I have, I have it. It talks about, you know, when you drive by, athletics are to a house as like a front porch. You drive by a house, you see a front porch, and you make an opinion, whether it's right or wrong about that house. Athletics kind of serve that purpose. When we leave this building, when we leave this community, we represent ourselves, our families, our teams, our building, and the whole community. So, we could play a school and go there and act inappropriately, and people are going to say, well, you know, that place is no good. Or you can go there, act appropriately, represent your community, and people say, you know, I've heard good things about that community. They know what they're doing. So, we talk about that with the kids, and I also talk about that in my preseason meetings with the coaches, kids, and parents, because it affects all of us.
That's a great, this is a great.
If anybody wants to pop in and visit the captain's council, we have a drop in policy. Mr. Gendron has popped in before, teachers, coaches, anybody here, if you want to pop in?
I think it's absolutely fabulous.
Yeah. Mr. Gendron and I are quite proud of it. We've adapted it in our second year, and we'll probably continue to adapt it. But we think it's wildly important and serves a great purpose.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Can I ask just?
Sure.
So, I agree. I think it's amazing. Is it, do you do it by season, or is it?
I do it by season. So, last year, completely transparent, we did it for the full year.
Sure.
And towards the end of the year, we kind of faded away a little bit. So, what we said is, how do we improve this? Each season has six preset meetings that we have, and we have, I came up with the curriculum that's always adapted to it, and so far, I think this is wildly improved.
Yep.
Doing it by a seasonal breakdown.
That's great. Yeah, because you get the buy-in, right?
There's a lot of buy-in.
Because the kids are in the season.
Yep, and we talked to the kids about, you know, how they're the leaders of the building, and, you know, we count on them. So, it's good. Do you want to know the IKEA effect?
I do.
I kind of want to tell you now.
Does it come with Swedish meatballs?
No, it doesn't come with an Allen wrench.
No, but you're on the right course. Like IKEA's whole business model was people will care more about the furniture that they built, because they're more invested in it. So, how do we, we use that as an example to the kids. If you help build your program and promote your program, you will care more about it. So, it's pretty cool, and the kids like it and they enjoy it.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay, I hope you guys all knew about this. In the fall, it really seems like forever ago now, Channel 5 came down and did their sports night from Wilmington High School. They had live updates of our game, of our football game versus Wakefield, and they also did their full segment from Alumni Field with the fans and the cheerleaders and the band in the background. It was really cool. We had two of our three MIAA student ambassadors went to this workshop, and the keynote speaker was Betsy Butterick, and she spoke about effective ways to communicate with today's athletes. Hannah Bryson and Michael Otis went. It was a great day. I took back things, even brought them, things that I learned at that, adapted them to the captain's council, and my everyday approach with the high school kids. This is something really cool. In the gym, if you've noticed, we now have track record boards, outdoor track, indoor track, and cross-country. The track and field boosters helped put this on. It was a really great event. There was people that actually showed up that flew in from as far as Ohio for this event. They had some speakers. The boards, they actually printed, so we could have like pictures taken with them. It was a really cool event, and for someone who grew up in Wilmington, so like, I know people on this list from like when I was a kid, they were like legendary athletes, to peers, I have like longtime best friends that are on this list, and then into my coaching days still, like, to see the different aspects and how proud people were that this was finally up there on the wall was really cool. It was a really special day. So, this brings us to Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving was the end of the fall season. We had a lot going on. Like Madison mentioned, we have some pictures of the Powderpuff. We had our pep rally with Willie the Wildcat and some games. There was a brave student who actually dressed up just like Mr. Ingram, if you could see that in the top left. And then we had our football game. We had a great day. The score wasn't what we wished, but it was a competitive game, and it was a really, really, really great day. So, that's the fall season. We had a lot in there, and I can't leave without saying, especially in front of Mr. Gendron, roll cats. Here's my email address, Instagram, and Twitter. If anybody has any questions, please reach out to me, and I don't know if anybody here has any questions.
Any questions? Mr. McCollum?
Nice presentation. Thanks a lot. So, one question I had, since you're here and I have a captive audience, I was wondering about middle school athletics program. Has that been talked about, and is that something that we think we may want to consider? And the reason why I'm thinking about it is where I grew up, we had middle school athletics, and then could be a good way to get some kids engaged in middle school, and then as a nice feeder system at high school, maybe help with retention.
It is something that we've thought about. It is something we're kind of looking at right now. There's like a couple of multiple layers that we're considering. Due to our enrollment, we find more and more sports are using mid-level waivers, so that's kind of pulling from that population. Some, we have a very strong youth and travel population participation rate in this town, so we don't want to, for lack of a better word, rob Peter to pay Paul. So, it is something we're thinking about it. You know, taking a step back, we'd say we'd love to mirror all the offerings that we have. That's not realistic. So, then we start cutting it back and kind of seeing where we can fit in and what's appropriate.
Sure.
Another thing that we think about all the time is gymnasium space and field space, which is tight to begin with, so then adding more layers to that. But it is something that we're thinking about, and we're in constant communication about.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, first of all, going way back, the participation, I think, is fantastic. It reminds me of what the middle school, with the theater program, where 20% of the entire building was in the play last year. Having 49% of the students participate in sports in the fall is amazing, and assuming that it's not complete overlap, you'll end up with 60 or 70% over the course of the full year, which is fantastic and a really good testament to the program. One quick question. In prior years, there was a discussion about some of the co-op programs, where we'll work with another town for sports where we don't have quite enough. I don't see any here. Do we have some in winter and spring, right?
Yeah, that's a good point. We have zero in the fall. In the winter, we co-op and swim with North Reading, with North Reading being the host. We co-op with girls hockey, with Stonem being the host, and we co-op with, I'm sorry, Bedford, with gymnastics, with us as the home team. So, it's something that we always think about. Girls hockey, the co-op might be up, because it's purely based on numbers, and Stonem is predicting that this could be the last year for them. So, the co-op is great, but it's not, it's not something that's going to last forever, and that's something that we have to think about.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
All right.
Can I stay the rest of the night, or do I have to go?
You can stay if you want.
Everybody, appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. We are going to be pulling Food Service Ward 29 out of the agenda this week and bring it back later meeting. If there are no objections, I would actually like to take the entire consent agenda at once and just get this done with a single motion if there is no objection.
So, moved.
So, we will have approval of the December 6, 2023 minutes from the regular session. Warrants, Grant 16 revolving 28 and 29, Local 48 through 52, Food Service 30, Capital Project 6, Payroll for December 20th, 2023, and Special Education Warrant 26. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Turner. All in favor?
Just a question. We usually get abstentions on the special ed warrants. Do we want to do them all with the exception of that one, or?
I don't think we need to anymore.
There's no conflict of interest anymore.
Very good.
Thank you for asking.
All right, so that is unanimous, and that disposes of the consent agenda, and that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Three items tonight. Two have material in the packet, and I'll go in order. The first, Wildcat Corner. The latest edition is out, and trying to push that out on social media wherever we can. Thanks again to WCTV for their partnership. This most recent episode, I had the pleasure to sit down and interview Julie Laduke, who as many of you are aware is the owner's project manager for the Wildwood Building Project, and Vivian Varbedian, sorry, who is a resident, an owner's project manager herself, as well as the vice chair of the Wildwood School Building Committee. It seemed like a timely and important opportunity to introduce members of our community to a couple of important folks who are part of this effort, and so if you're interested in meeting them and learning more about the project, certainly love those views to tick up there, so explore that. The second item tonight, West Intermediate School Principal Search, there is a accompanying item in the packet. As you know, Dr. Foster has recently, West Intermediate Principal has recently announced his retirement at the end of the current school year. We appreciate his decision to give the district quite a bit of notice, and we always try and take advantage of that, and we'll do so again in this case. And what I mean by that is to get a posting out now, actually. So, you have the brochure. The posting went up, I think, yesterday, if not Monday, through Mr. Armstrong, and you can see the dates that are in there. We just think it's a great opportunity to try and get a head start on other communities that may also be searching. This is a long process. We're mirroring what we've done for other leadership searches in the past, and that's, that includes, of course, an extensive time period for people to apply. The closing of this position is in early February, and then from there, we'll follow suit with what we've done in the past. We're in the process of pulling together interested people to serve in the search committee, and interviews will take place and site visits and so on. If all goes as according to the plan, it will be in early March, in which we'll be able to be at a point and to name a finalist for that position. So, I'll pause there if there are any questions from the committee on that.
Just a comment.
Ms. Burns.
The brochure, it looks spectacular, as always. And I'm always, I'm just impressed by the content, as well as the layout, as, you know, it's just so eye-catching and just so professional. I just, I think it's the art aspect with me that I just love how it captures one's eye and brings you throughout the brochure and hitting all the right points.
Well, thank you, and I think it's sort of the front porch theory as well, too, I guess, if you will, in terms of trying to put our best foot forward and have something appealing out there for interested candidates. The third and final item tonight under the superintendent's report is the Tech Plan Committee, and with Mr. Lord's help has put this together. He has kicked off the Technology Plan Committee. This is, as you know, part of our strategic plan effort, but in addition to that, we have a current technology plan that will soon be expiring. As you'll note in the memo, there's work that is already underway. I had the pleasure to attend part of their last meeting together. What I'm thrilled about under Mr. Lord's leadership is the fact that we have so much interest community-wide. Hopefully, you'll agree. I think it's 10 or 11 parents, guardians in total throughout the community, I think nine staff members, I counted, and a couple of students as well, too. So, I think broad representation, and their work has begun. As noted in the memo, there will certainly be opportunities for much feedback to be gathered through the process. This is a very important document, as you know. It obviously sets the direction for us as a school community related to technology and the support of teaching and learning. It's also an important complement for our capital planning related to technology. So, you'll certainly hear more about this as unfolds, but I just thought it would be important to provide you with a sense of who's on the committee, the representation we have, and we look forward to the work that will unfold under Mr. Lord's leadership. And unless there are any questions on that, that's it for this.
Just a very quick one. How does that work interlock with the work with the MSBA Wildwood Program? Because with a new building, obviously, the opportunities and changes for technology are going to be a big impact to that next five-year plan.
Yeah, great question. I think it's fair to say that this plan will take shape as if nothing is going to change in our configuration of our schools and our layouts. We can't make any assumptions yet. That said, as that project does take shape for the Wildwood, there'll be the ability to sort of nuance and adjust this. There very much could be, it could be in the capital plan, things that are brought into the district that can be taken to a new school. There are other things that may not be, and will come as part of the new construction, and so we'll have time to sort that out, and that'll be important to track, certainly.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I want to quickly jump back to the principal search for one moment with just two comments. I really do appreciate the thoroughness of the process that we use for recruiting and choosing new district leadership. I think that there could be a lot of places where you can cut corners in some of that, and I'm glad that we really just follow that consistently every single time, that they're coming to us, we're going to them. We do district visits both ways. I think that this has served us well in the past, and I'm glad that we're continuing to move that forward. And also, I just wanted to extend my appreciation and gratitude to Dr. Foster for the last several years that he spent in our district and the work he's done at the school.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
All right. That brings us to item seven, public comment. Mr. Fennelly?
Thank you. So, there were no public comments submitted in advance, nor were there members of the public signed up in advance. However, as we always do, open the meeting to public comment if anybody would like to give any. Very good. Thank you.
All right. And then item eight, new business, and beginning with school improvement plans. Dr. Brand.
Thanks very much. We are continuing with the presentation of improvement plans, and this evening, Mr. Gendron is here to share with you highlights of the high school plan. You have that in your packet. Again, the school improvement plans, I believe, are such an, yeah, sorry, the quote's coming Again, the school improvement plans, I believe, are such an, yeah, sorry, the quote's coming forward. Certainly, an important mark with the community in terms of the direction and the priorities. Our individual schools, we obviously work together as a school district. We're working hard, as you know, to try and make sure that we are all rowing and moving in the same direction on some of the larger areas, for sure. And that's, those are captured in our district improvement plan. At the same time, we want to support the fact that there are some aspects that are more germane to high school improvement than St. Elementary School. So, tonight, it's a focus on the high school, and then, in the new year, we will share with you the middle school. But with that, welcome.
Great. Alright, hello, everyone. Good evening. Good to see everyone again. For anyone watching at home, I'm Ryan Gendron, proud principal of Wilmington High School. I'm joined tonight by Jessica Bourgeois, our co-chair. I wanted to also thank all the members of the School Advisory Council who have helped put this presentation and these school improvement goals together. The other parents on the advisory council are Alicia Turner and Michelle Feeny. The teachers on the council are Lisa Belivia, Jeremy Salerno, and Amanda Salerno. And we have two students, a senior, Maria Cummings, and a sophomore, Pranima Thapa. Anything you'd like to say about?
I just wanted to give a little shout-out to the School Advisory Council. Any parents that are looking to get involved in their school community, it's a great way to get to know your principal, learn a lot about the happenings at the school, and also get involved in the school improvement plan, which will be going over tonight.
Great.
Mr. Ingram broke it.
Yeah, he was clicking.
So, I thought before jumping into the school improvement plan, we could wrap up last year with some of the highlights. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but we thought some numbers that we'd like to share. Seventy-six percent represents the 10th grade ELA MCAS proficiency. That's a great performance. You get that number by combining the number, the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations. That number exceeded the state average by 31%, which is quite significant. So, that was great. Our AP students also did well. Sixty-eight percent scored three or higher on the AP exams. Those are typically the scores that are, you know, considered passing and eligible for college credit. That went up by 7% compared to the previous year. The Panorama results, we are really pleased with. There are six categories, and when you combine the growth, it increased by 26%, which is great. At the question level, each question that makes up those categories, it was an 86% increase, which was also dramatic. School of Rock was a rocking success. Picture there. Over 1,300 tickets sold, which was, you know, a box office record, thanks to lamplighters and the district for working together with online ticket sales. The auditorium transformed into a rock concert. It was fantastic. Forty-one, so that represents, it's actually a larger number than that. Forty-one is the number of students who had transferred to WHS this year, actually. So, I went back and got last year's number, which was 48. Combine, that makes 87 kids who have transferred into WHS between last year and the months we've been in school so far. The 15 there from Shawshank represents this year. There were another 11 from last year. And 73% is the eighth to ninth grade retention rate. The three-year average before that was around 58%. So, 73% this year is a significant improvement. It says plus 12% since October 1st. That unfortunately is a typo. It's plus 2%. So, the number we had to report was 73%. That's based on the October 1st number. But we've had more ninth graders coming in since then, so we're up to 75%. Yeah. Alright, so for tonight's school improvement plan, we prepared these slides to be, I think, more visually concise. We also completed the district template for the school improvement plan, which is in the school committee packet. That includes the timeline, measurable outcomes of success. But we will primarily talk about the goals and the initiatives, although we're happy to answer any questions about that. We'll pause after we talk about each goal to talk, take feedback and questions about that goal as we go. Do you want to talk about the goal?
So, the first goal is to establish a multi-tiered system of support with clear map of the tier one, two, and three interventions for academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. So, that's kind of the, you know, school, teacher way of saying it. But for, I think, for a parent, what it means is that you'll be able to look at a clear map of, say, your student is, needs help in an area, or also needs enrichment in an area. You can be able to look at this map and see what kind of support system is out there for your student. So, it'll be for academic, social, emotional, and also behavioral. So, I think it would be really beneficial for students and for the parents.
Awesome. And the good news is a lot of those interventions and enrichments already exist. It's just a matter of formalizing and consolidating that information, so it's easily accessible to all stakeholders. The initiatives we have in mind to do that is to create a physical, multi-tiered systems of support map. I included a link in the packet to give you an idea of the visual. Once completed, every intervention or enrichment on that map will have a link to a template page with what students are eligible, how the intervention works, what the timeline is, and what stakeholders are involved. That's actually the second initiative that's listed there. We will formalize systems to review academic, SEL behavior, data to target interventions. Again, there are systems already in place, but formalizing them around which school personnel are involved, how frequently they're happening, and what the reporting looks like is the goal of that initiative. To communicate that newly established MTSS plan with the WHS community is a later part of the initiative for that goal. And then, to implement and refine that overarching process for the next school year, you know, there will be unexpected road bumps to sort out as we go. And so, year two of this goal will incorporate navigating those, improving the plan, and being ready to talk about it for the subsequent improvement plan. So, we can pause there. Any questions or feedback regarding Goal 1?
Dr. McCauley?
Yep, so, thanks. I think the initiatives look great. You know, a lot of thought definitely went into that, and I think it's a good plan. Not on the PowerPoint slide, but I think we also received kind of more of a detailed plan with measurable outcomes. And that was just something I wanted to touch on a little bit, was when I was reading those outcomes, they kind of read a little bit to me more like deliverables. So, like, oh, here's what is going to be delivered out of the initiative, but, which is important. But it's kind of more like, what are we expecting to be the outcome of these initiatives? Would it be higher GPAs, test scores, less SEL interventions, you know, things like that?
Yeah, good question and good point. I would agree that like what is in that measurable outcomes column is more deliverables, like what artifacts will align with these. I think, you know, to identify data points that might supplement them, I definitely think MCAS scores would be an area of growth that we would expect to see both increased performance, but also closing of achievement gaps. You know, I think we would expect to see attendance rate improve, along with like the accompanying data points with dropout rate, chronic absenteeism, and those kinds of data points. But I think I can definitely elaborate more in that column. If like more tangible data points would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, just having some metrics behind it, you know. And it doesn't, everything doesn't need to be numbers-based, but it could also be kind of anecdote-based as well, too.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, Burns?
So, some of the examples that you touched upon are, I guess, I'm used to looking, and this is, I think, where I'm struggling with the school improvement plans. When I onboarded a decade ago, it was, this template works for me, but there was also evidence of, that was also shown to school community. This is the evidence by which we are going to create these goals and hit these data points, of what the expectations, the outcomes are going to actually look like. And I think, I think this is where I struggle a little bit, because in a way, I don't, so this is great. I see, I see the process, but I don't, I don't know, what am I, at the end of this process, even the midway point, where, what am I to measure to say, okay, you've done a good portion of this goal, now I know how the second year is going to look like. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know what that expectation actually looks like, because it's kind of gray. You know what I mean? Without, and I think, and it's not just, because I think, and I love how you started off with a beginning. This is where we are, and this is, now, these are the goals that are going to drive us further, which I think is great, and I think it's so much needed. But I think, I think I struggle, because I, the way I think I process them, I want to know what should I expect at the end of this, so that I know the adjustments that'll need to be made. I understand the rationale, where, you know, where it's sort of like, well, we didn't kind of do this, so we're going to go this way. You know what I mean? It kind of, I have to try to piece it together, you know, not knowing what that expectation. Not saying that it's, as Mr. McCauley said, a black and white percentage. You know what I mean? But I want, I guess, have some understanding, this is where you hope to be by the end of the school year, and this is how we're going to segue into the second year of these goals. Sure. So, to meet the, whatever that end result is. And I think, just me as an individual, that's, and I think I have a prolonged habit of seeing these. And so, I may be struggling a little bit with the transition of how our school improvement goals are being presented, only because that's, those are the kind of data points I've grown accustomed to looking for, so I know at the end of the year, okay, so that makes sense, why you're now asking for, whether it be new curriculum or new initiative, you know, purchases in that realm, you know? And I say that broadly, not just on the high school piece. But I just, again, want to kind of reiterate that that's kind of what helps me piece everything together at the end of the year, as we evolve with our programming and the resources that we offer our students.
Mr. Gendron, I mean, I feel that you also addressed some of that with the points that you were mentioning, and without, you know, the chronic absenteeism and attendance and MCAS and so forth. Obviously, we know when MCAS happens. For some of the others, like, you know, I think, you know, Panorama, SEL, again, I don't think we need to focus on getting an exact percentage. I think that getting, getting too precise with like, oh, we're trying to hope that we achieve 72% on this particular panorama thing, you start trying to manipulate things almost to hit weird things. I've mentioned this before, I don't want to belabor it. But I think that some of the things that you've already kind of mentioned tie into, well, this is what we expect to see if our plans are successful. It's kind of, again, the theory of action, that like, you know, if we do these things, then we expect or we're hoping that we're going to see these results.
Yeah, and I think maybe even those metrics with the subsequent goals, you'll see, they might be the same metrics. It almost feels as if this entire school improvement plan is towards driving some of those global outcomes. And I think one of the tricky parts with this particular goal is in the feedback that it's based on. The feedback that it's based on came from kind of my onboarding here, and like street-level conversations with families and students and teachers around not knowing what supports are available if my student's struggling. There's a real clear, if you want, you know, special ed supports, like that is outlined by the state. But for our in-house supports, if you're just falling behind in math, what do you do? Who do you talk to? And every educator in the building has a different understanding of that, if it's not on a map. And so, like, it didn't, that goal didn't grow from, you know, like a quantified or a data point. It came from kind of the feedback of the stakeholders. So, it's tough, like you're saying, to nail down an area of a particular data point. But I think all of these goals are going to contribute to some very measurable ones, like the ones we talked about.
Mr. Fennelly?
Well, and so, and correct me if I'm wrong, and sort of coming from where you both are to the middle, I think, it almost sounds like we're talking about like a mid-cycle review, essentially, kind of like we've done, Dr. Brand's review over two, you know, on this first initiative, you're going to create a multi-tiered system of support. You're going to do these things, and then, for the next school year, you're going to refine it. What worked, what didn't, how do we improve it, right? So, it's, it's almost like you've got some of those measurable goals, and then also, how are you going to continue to grow and improve? So, I think it's, it's important to have those, but those aren't the final, those aren't the end-all, be-all, right? It's, that's a mark along the way, essentially.
Mr. Gendron?
And I do take your point about having a broader view of that, and whether the three goals interlock. Thinking about things at the end of it, not necessarily with Goal 1, Goal 2, Goal 3, how did we do? Overall, if we're looking at 2022, 23 to 24, 25, how do we view the school has evolved and changed? Where do we see things that were successful and not successful? And to the point of metrics, giving us an idea of what you will look for to know if you've been successful.
Exactly.
Having these things as deliverables are clearly, you can't get there without doing, and for lack of a better way, you checked off, we have created this thing, pick any one of them, and now, and it's part of our program to roll forward. So, you have to do that sort of work, and there's a lot of work behind some of these. But then broadly, at the end of it, you, again, highlighted some really good points about 2022, 23 school year, great things that have happened. What will you look for in '25 to know that, and feel like, okay, we had a really good program, we did these sorts of things collectively and had this sort of benefit? I think that'll be a way to bring both some of the mechanical in with the more broad-based views of the school, without worrying, again, to some of the other points about, okay, 72% versus 73% improvement in a lot of different areas is a really good sign, for example.
Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I want to apologize, I was having some technical issues for the beginning part of this meeting, so I apologize to anybody. I wasn't just, you know, doing, doing something else. I was trying to be able to see all this stuff. So, just to sort of chime in on this, as I'm looking at this, at this plan, like, I, especially when I look at this Goal Number 1, right? And I see it as establishing this thing, right? This multi-tiered system of support and this map. And then, it's like, each of the initiatives are, are like steps in the process. So, if all of these, like the initiatives and the outcomes are pretty much the same, but, and I don't necessarily know if I see another way of measuring, like, we need to make this, you know, you need to make this document, and then the measurable outcome is, did we make the document? Like, yes or no? So, to me, for this goal in particular, I don't know if there's a way to measure. I think a lot of times when we're talking about data, everyone's like, numbers, numbers, numbers. But like, a lot of times, like, data is just, can be information. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that every, you know, sort of agree with sort of what Mr. Ragseal is saying, too, is like, not everything is necessarily quantifiable. So, when I look at this, it actually, I prefer, like, for this goal, like, I think this goal makes a lot of sense to me. The initiatives make sense, and the measurable outcomes make sense, because it's, it's like, you know, it's not like we're measuring, you know, how well this is being implemented, right? We need to have a map. You know, we can measure how well it's being implemented in another cycle, but we need to have this like down on paper first. There's lots of steps that need to happen. So, that's how I see some of this. So, I, you know, I just wanted to add my two cents there on that, that I think that it makes a lot of sense, and I would prefer to see this as opposed to something that's giving me percentages.
But I think collectively, the feedback's helpful. I think we could put together some kind of parent survey, student survey, asking, you know, when you need to get help in a particular domain, do you understand how to get it and where? And maybe when this is established, we, you know, issue that survey and see if that's helped increase that, you know? To really, that's really what, what I'm trying to do here. And so, I think the feedback is helpful.
One thing I really like about how you've emphasized is the formalizing some of these systems and increasing the consistency across the school, because that's, that's hard to do in a high school. Like, in an elementary, in an elementary school, it's easier to do, because there's a more uniform curriculum by the nature of like the elementary program. And obviously, it starts to get trickier at the secondary level, and it's hardest in the high school, because the courses are so different. Even within the same subject, there are different levels that have the different needs. But trying to, again, sort of get that consistency, so that there's still the same process that you go through, even if you're in one class versus another, or you're taking an AP versus taking honors or a CP, whatever the case is, that there's a more consistent approach for people to use throughout the building, even though they're, you know, they're more spread into their own subjects and departments. I think that's a really, a really beneficial thing. Ms. Burns?
I just wanted to segue that, not segue, but just piggyback, that especially with the Goal 1, I'm kind of a forgive-me, cart before the horse kind of gal. So, and so, maybe my comments did not completely, I think, encompass just Goal 1, but just our school improvement goals in general. And I also think that, you know, the purpose of our school improvement plans is to evolve and to do better for learning and teaching, our environments, and to propel. So, I just, and I think that in itself is the essence of why we do our school improvement goals. And I think, if I can try to clarify my thoughts, I want, this, and this is very clear. Goal 1 is extremely clear, and I, I have no problem with the goals, because I think they're formulated fantastically. I guess, I want, I guess I want to understand, and it's, Goal 1 is clearly, is clear in that. I guess I want to understand in our school improvement goals for each of our schools, what it is I'm expected to see, you know, to say that we're hoping to have, this, again, Goal 1 doesn't apply to this comment, but I want to see what it is, is being chosen to be targeted, and what that outcome's going to look like. Because we all want, you know, better student learning, student growth, you know? what, what that outcome's going to look like, because we all want, you know, better student learning, student growth, you know, teaching resources for support system. So I just, I guess, you know, just to, I guess that's where I, I may be struggling a little bit. You know, because I'm used to seeing, okay, this year we're targeting this, this and this. I said, well, go one, I mean, I think it was very clear. But, and I think that's, and forgive me if my comments are generalized because it, it's not specific to where we are in this presentation, but thank you for letting me share.
So I think if I could just comment with this goal, I think like the MTSS exists, it's already an existing thing. It, the point of the goal was more to form, like make it more formal and then communicate it out to the parents and the students so that they were better informed. So I think like a way to measure it would be, like you said, if, if you asked students what they understood about MTSS now, and then after you've created a map and, you know, educated people on it, then you could.
That would be evidence-based. So that would be evidence in order to support the outcome.
See if, if the communication had worked.
Exactly.
Basically.
Thank you.
Let's hear your goal two, right?
Oh, so goal two is to expand student access and choice through adjustments to the school's schedule and the program of studies. So I think what this means as a parent is your student would have more elective choice available and, and electives and what do you call the other regular word?
And core.
Yeah, and core classes. So it would add a block for another choice. And it would also make the grade levels, the college prep, the honors and the AP, very clear about the expectations for your student. So you could help, as a parent, you could help them choose when they're making their schedule, be better informed on what the requirements are for each level.
Is that like pathways for each level? For like college prep courses, there's like a pathway of expectation of courses?
I think it's, it, this goal was more about both expanding the access so that, you can explain, it'll be better explained with the, with the block scheduling.
Yeah, so this is a picture of the side-by-side of our current schedule and the proposed schedule. So in our current schedule, the flex block is identified. That's when students have the opportunity to, the what I need element to get extra support. So the remaining seven blocks are scheduled classes. There are, you know, and for the schedule proposal, I was going to identify where it fits in the school improvement plan more than give you a full schedule proposal tonight. But the general idea is that when students have their required classes, which I include world language because most colleges expect three years of it, it leaves one block in the current schedule for them to make like a discretionary decision around a class. If they're in band, that's gone. If they have a learning center on their IP, that's gone. And so for three years, many students have that elective choice consumed. NIASK, when they came in twenty twenty-one, said the school needs to make sure that the schedule is working for all students and all staff. And our preliminary analysis is that it, it's not. A schedule review committee started working on this in twenty twenty-one, and Ms. Peters during our transition said she didn't feel comfortable making a call on the schedule right before a new principal came in. And so their work kind of segued into my first year. This proposed schedule on the right is an eight-block schedule. It adds one additional block, which would be an additional elective a student could take. If the student is in a learning center or in the band, that block would still be consumed. But there would be a second block that would be available to make another choice. The career clusters are a really strong element of Wilmington High School, but with the constrained schedule, there's not much flexibility to explore those clusters or specialize in a cluster that they're most interested in. For your question about pathways, a student might want to really specialize in electives and core classes aligned with STEM or aligned with art, but with limited elective choices, they don't actually have much flexibility to do so. The other big constraint in the current schedule, with the flex block on the white day, our teachers need to have a block off during the day. So every Wilmington High School teacher can only teach two blocks on that white day. It then means everyone has to teach their three-block day on the blue day, creating a lack of symmetry from the beginning of the scheduling process that really ties hands. On the proposed side, we can have half the teachers teach three on blue day, half the teachers teach three on white day. It scatters our sections in a much more organized way, which allows the student schedules to be more balanced. Right now, blue days and white days can be disproportionately heavy, especially with AP classes. And it has just more structural symmetry that facilitates the overall schedule better. It also shortens the blocks from eighty-five minutes to seventy-four minutes, which students and staff have suggested will be better for sustained engagement and lesson planning. And the third major perk is it'll allow us to schedule more common planning time in the schedule. Right now, teachers don't have common planning time because of the lack of blocks available. So that would allow us to put content teams off at the same block to do collaborative planning. The plan is for the schedule review committee themselves to come in January, when we're talking about program of studies, to give you a more comprehensive introduction to the schedule. It just felt like I can't have it on here and allude to a new schedule without a little bit of, you know, insight into it. Okay. If I can just run through these, I think it could potentially answer some questions. So the initiative isn't to implement that schedule, it's to gather feedback. We had a faculty meeting today when we introduced the schedule review committee, introduced the schedule and went through their rationale for the proposal. In January, when we get back, we'll have student forums during W two, family forums probably during Zoom and maybe a in-person one. So we'll gather that feedback to refine the proposal and then in January, present to the school committee with the final proposal. As part of doing this, we need to update our level descriptions for CP and honors and AP. We need to define what the level of work is expected in class, out of class, what the assessments look like, what the retake expectations look like, because to Mr. Ragdale's point earlier, there is widespread variation across the high school. One, you know, CP class in a particular content area is not the same as another within that department or across that department. So we don't want that extra elective class to just pile on more work for students. Really, we want to rebalance those eight classes, make sure it's very clear to students, families and teachers what the workload expectations are for each level. Also in line with that, initiative three, increasing consistency in elective course levels. Almost all of our elective courses run at the college prep level with a couple of outliers. As we researched why they got placed there, it wasn't a super intentional purpose. It was more, it kind of evolved that way. And so our proposal would be to have all of our elective courses run at the college prep level. That would be consistent. It would remove the GPA gamesmanship from selecting honors electus for the wrong reasons. A student on the school advisory council said that move alone would provide, and this is her words, freedom in choosing classes that they're interested in, not in building the, you know, master transcript, which was really powerful to me and maybe a sign we were on the right track. The other initiatives aligned with this would be to update the program of studies to reflect all those changes. Really, it should say the handbook too, there's a lot of alignment with the student handbook. Similar to maybe goal one, the last initiative would be to implement and refine in the following year, which I know is not super specific about next year, but it, it's hard to really predict what we will need to tweak. We took this year's course selection tallies and we built that schedule and ran it in the scheduling software. And even from the first run, and when I say first run, Mr. Miranda runs it the first time to see how the classes and sections lands. And then there's some manual tinkering with it. He was shocked at the first run, how balanced, how distributed and how effective it was just by the changes in the structural integrity of the schedule. But there are other unexpected things we'll have to work through as we go and that's kind of accounted for by that last initiative.
Questions, Mr. Turner.
First of all, I, I wanted to say, the very first conversation we ever had touched on W two in the schedule. And so I'm really excited to see this coming through, and I appreciate Ms. Peters starting the process and then pausing it to give you a chance to, to really engage with it. And I, I'm, I'm excited to see it. I do think a lot of these changes are important for helping the students and the parents know the right things to pick for the kids. And then the other side of the elective piece is there, the performing arts program is fantastic and I really appreciate it, but there are kids who drop it for the exact opposite reason of they want to have a different elective. And so I think that this will actually increase participation. It's not just going to allow the kids that are in strings, band and chorus to have an elective. It's also going to have kids that have been dropping it to get the elective a chance to stay. And so I think this will help those programs as well. And so I'm, I'm excited to see the, the potential for this. And certainly there's a lot of details and a lot of work to be done, but I think it's, it's a great start and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I was surprised after today's faculty meeting, a visual arts teacher came very excited because they said now the band students can take art if they want to. I said, what, what do you mean? And I didn't under, I'm the one proposing this and I didn't understand that even that was like an inaccessibility. If a student really wants to invest in the arts, it's hard to do. It's almost like that schedule pigeonholes them to one, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Honey?
I think it's really great. As someone in the band, it really is tough. It's really only this year now that I've stopped taking a world language and a science class that I've been able to take these electives. My question is, is it still going to be working the same as a W two? Like you're still able to go see your teachers and stuff?
Mm-hmm. And if I go back to that, so you say, see the time shrank to forty-eight minutes. The schedule review committee worked a lot on what that number should be. Right now, we have eighty-five. If you split that by two, it'd be like basically forty-two minutes. And they felt like forty-five minutes was almost a tipping point with some of the programming that happens during W two. There's school counseling seminars, there's enrichments, there's guest speakers, there's retakes. And if that number gets too small, it's hard to do the kind of work that happens there. And so we, we spent time between this, I don't know if this sounds ridiculous, forty-four minutes versus forty-eight minutes. It has to be an integer of four because then you distribute the minutes in the other blocks. But this was the one that they found the most support for. Would still use my flex learning to book the appointments. And as of right now, I don't think we'd split the forty-eight into two blocks. I think that would be too short for the reasons that I just said. So I think we'd be looking at one appointment per day, every day of the week.
Mr. Fennelly.
So I had a question, but you answered it, so I'm going to make a comment, I think. Well, I think it's important because that schedule, so for, you can stay here, but I, I think all of these initiatives are great. I like this number, the goal number two a lot. But what I was pleased to hear you say was that the, sort of the change in the schedule would benefit both the students and the faculty, like that, not to suggest that teachers are an afterthought certainly, but that there's going to be benefit for both groups, I think is really positive. So I'm, I'm glad you answered that and I'm glad to see that that's going to be part of it. So thank you.
I'm just concerned how we're going to get out of, you know, unused to the habit of just referring to W two.
I know.
What did you do in W two? I had my class, I had biology, what are you talking about? All right, flex block, flex block. I remember the, the meeting when we discussed this back in twenty twenty-one. And I was, I'm really glad to see that this has carried through and that there was follow-through on this initiative because I was very excited about it, you know, from the, for all the reasons that you, that you, that you mentioned, that, that, that this was a direction that I thought was a good one to go in and I'm really glad to sort of see this fruition coming to, coming, I guess, coming to fruition. I get fruition coming to fruition. I'm not quite constructing my sentence properly. So I am, so I, so I really like this and have for a long time, but I would like to, I'd like to hear some of the downsides. Because I am an inherent also of the philosophy of their own are solutions, only trade-offs. And I think this, I mean, I do think this is the right set of trade-offs to make, but can you talk a little bit about what is lost by making this shift?
Yep. And you're going to love the schedule review committee's full presentation if this is right up your alley. But I think the two that have got, highlight the most, the first is AP classes. So AP teachers in the Northeast especially like to point out that there are students across the country who start their AP classes at an earlier date than our New England students. You know, to take minutes off of those classes changes their overall minutes to teach the AP curriculum, which has a start and an end and it's all on the test. So I think AP teachers are already thinking creatively about how they would adapt to this, but I think that's one area that we'll need to problem solve. The other is the potential, if not kind of managed correctly, for this to result in a net increase on student workload. So we're working a lot with the student counselors who already meet with students to counsel them on their course selection, caution them against taking on too much, too soon or too early. They've talked about even adding kind of a waiver process if students want to exceed for AP classes, but that additional slot creates new combinations of ways that students could use it. So we're trying to get ahead of any, you know, ways that might potentially not be beneficial. So those are two examples, but I think there will be more that the schedule review committee will talk about in January.
Okay, I think that the, the, the point about the AP is particularly sharp because of course, as you said, they have a defined curriculum that's on the test that happens at a defined time. But I think that that's also going to be an issue that it's going to be an adjustment for, for everyone, for the entire faculty. Because it's kind of in the abstract, a seventy-four-minute class doesn't sound that much shorter than an eighty-five-minute class on an individual class basis, but that eleven minutes over the course of an entire year is a lot less instructional time. And you really do need to kind of think through, what am I going to be able to cover and what kind of adjustments do I make with cumulatively less time? Because obviously there's the same amount of time, you can only, you can chop it up however you want, but there's the same amount of minutes. And so if we're spreading it over more classes, then there's simply less time in each class to teach the material that previously was taught. And, and that'll be something that we'll have to, to think about and figure out.
And it's one of the benefits of us kind of doing this earlier in the school year because we have CIT day time and department time and faculty meeting time and summer PD time to, to work those changes out. It also reflects some of the reality of the eighty-four-minute classrooms, that, that block and how long that is and some of the practices that have involved to build in some breaks or transitions or, or maybe not all of those eighty-four minutes being utilized efficiently. And so.
There's probably a pretty good argument that are those last eleven minutes really used really effectively for good student learning?
Right, so maybe an additional transition in the day to get people up and moving and then back in a classroom. You know, it'll be interesting to see all that play out.
Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, I have, well, from a, from a, from like a teacher perspective, like seventy-four minutes versus eighty-five minutes is incredibly significant. Like the way you plan out those two, that, they're very, very different things. And I, I think that, you know, I, I think you said that your, your faculty in, in general is in support, seems to be in, in support of that. I, I mean, personally, seventy, eighty-five minutes is a long class. Seventy-four is hitting kind of a nice sweet spot, in my opinion. One of the things that you mentioned too was the, like some common planning time being sort of added into the schedule. I don't want to minimize the importance of that. In my experience, that's incredibly important. And I think when you talk about, you know, consistency across school, like having common planning time really is, is one way where you can align more, more things. One of my questions was, and I, I don't know if this is, this is, do we approve the, a schedule? No, they're just going to present that for our information.
Right. We're not.
No, the program of studies you do, the handbook you do, the schedule you, you don't. But we, we're intending to kind of bundle some of those things together as, as Mr. Jenner said in January.
I could see how one would impact the other, one impact the other.
Yeah. Mr. Turner.
This is a detail, feel free to punt it to January if you don't want to talk about it tonight. Blue three, W three, white three, in the proposal, the, right now you have the three lunch periods in the eighty-five minutes. And so the one class that has the middle lunch ends up with, you know, the split on either side of it. Will it get to be too disruptive for B three and W three where you're splitting the seventy-four instead of the eighty-five? For that class, obviously the teachers that teach it have gotten used to, I teach about forty-two minutes, I teach about forty-two minutes. Then you're getting down to thirty and thirty. Is that one going to be a challenging block for some of the teachers?
It's a good question. I'll check. We have a different version of the proposed schedule that has all the times mapped out. It's just visually a lot, so I didn't use it here. I'll double-check. That hasn't come up in the feedback yet. That doesn't mean that it won't. So I'll inquire with the review committee and some teachers to see if it's getting too tight. Although those blocks are not seventy-four minutes, so they're seventy-four plus thirty. But it will have less turnaround time in between.
Well, it's, and it's, it's the fact that, that one group that has the middle lunch, the, the bit on either side is now down to thirty. the bit on either side is now down to thirty eight, thirty nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that too, too tight on that side, thirty seven, excuse me?
All right.
All right, goal three.
Goal three. Increased sense of pride, connectedness and inclusiveness for all stakeholders in a W H S community. So this one, I feel like is pretty self explanatory. But there are some initiatives that go along with it.
And there was, you know, intention to align at least one goal, strategic plan, objective five. And it felt like the best way to do so was to borrow the language directly from that. There are a lot of initiatives because I don't think any one puts a dent in this big goal by itself. I think there are certain initiatives on here that'll work really well with some students or communities that are not feeling the pride or connectedness or inclusiveness and other initiatives that will miss that group. But perhaps others will be more engaging. Some of this work is already in kind of progress and some of these things are new. But including the photo in the background, that was Culture Fest from this past year, which was put on by the World Cultures Clubs. And they have dozens of cultural backgrounds with presentations of food and dance and music. It was like an incredible night. So I think that's not something we started, that's been a Wilmington tradition for years. And I think we can lean into existing traditions and start new initiatives to make sure that all students are feeling connected. So the weekly update, the target audience of that is both students and families and staff. That was a day one project after hearing from stakeholders that they didn't always know what was going on in the building, so it was hard to participate in certain things. And so that's been a great success. We, we watched the, when I usually push it out on Sundays, we watched the activity. You know, Google tracks the metrics of how many people. And so the turnout is really high on those. To increase W H S student representation in W P S, so that's referring to taking W H S students and going to different schools. Matty's talked a lot about the different groups and the different projects and the different ways that students are going out and interacting with other W P S students. It's kind of an investment in the future, you know, and hoping that those younger students will see themselves as Matty someday and want to come to the high school and be going back and kind of creating this cycle of pride. We're expanding translation and interpretation services. We have Lexicate, which is on demand translation when we need to talk to a student or a family with a primary language other than English. We are building interventions when a student level panorama result is not strong and a student is telling us that they're not feeling the connectedness or positive S E L indicators. The school counseling department, again, has some informal interventions. We're looking to formalize those interventions and make sure that any indication that a student needs additional support, there's a really clear follow up for them. We've increased student voice in the vision of the graduate curriculum. Those are the lessons aligned with the five mindsets of learner, communicator, collaborator. One of our school advisory council members, Maria Cummings, had the idea of creating student videos to kick off those lessons and help build the curriculum, which has been really fun and a great idea. And so as students get more involved with telling other students what the vision of the graduate is, those students begin to represent the different stakeholder groups or community groups of Wilmington. The departments are working on increasing diverse representation and curriculum. The English department has a book review committee that looks at all new resources, resources going into the curriculum, analyzes them for bias or what lens or perspectives are presented or missing from the different curriculum resources. We're looking to expand school spirit events. We added Wildcat Week last, last year. We've really tried to build up and expand the world language cultural activities around the different heritage months, weeks and celebrations. And the last one is analyzing representation in student recognitions. So we have a lot of ways that we recognize students. Some are monthly, like in student of the month representations. Some are yearly and end of the year awards, some are quarterly. And so we're analyzing kind of the profiles of the students to identify if there are gaps, if there are underrepresented populations. And we communicate with the staff, we push out the past recipients of awards to try to make sure that we are intentional about who we're recognizing, why we're recognizing them, and making sure that the recognitions match the demographics of the school. So questions or feedback regarding goal three?
And I think as a parent, I just can't say enough about the weekly update. I mean, I use it every week and it's really been helpful to feel more part of the community because I'll attend events I see on there. And, you know, it has like the students of the month, you might see them out, you can recognize them, or students that have gotten awards, you can, if you see them, you could say like, oh, I saw you got this. And it's just been really nice to keep up with all that because teenagers don't always let you know what's happening.
Mr. Turner.
I'm curious about, I'm really happy to see all of this, obviously, but the, the fourth one, strategic student level panorama interventions. Part of what I wonder about and worry about in a high school environment is the kids that are connected are super connected. And we've got some amazing examples, this school of students who volunteer for different things, they're involved in ten and twelve clubs and all these sorts of things. But then the kids who are disconnected are obviously, and it's kind of self fulfilling, difficult to connect. And getting them to feel part of the community, not left out or not isolated, is really, really difficult. And in, in some ways, it's, it's solving the problem is, is, is the problem itself. And so I'm curious about how well we can do that with the counselors, but then also how well we can have ways that those kids feel empowered and welcome enough to be at some of these places that they're not currently. And so I, I really like this goal and I'm really curious about how an administration, how the teachers, how some of the other students can reach out in ways to help folks feel more comfortable when they're clearly disconnected and clearly, you know, isolated. Because that's part of the high school experience for kids and it always has been. And part of the challenge is, is to break some of those cycles. And so I'm curious how, how you view that part of this goal and the, the, the progress that could be made there.
Yep. And so that came up at a recent counseling meeting as we were developing the school improvement plan. And so we've started to get some of their insight on it. As you mentioned, this is a challenge students have been facing forever in high schools. And the biggest challenge is identifying the students. The beauty of panorama is if students, you know, feel trusting enough to give that feedback in the survey, for us to be able to identify students, I, I think the, there's a category sense of belonging and that one really hits home. And if a student, you know, self rate's low on that one, it's almost like opening the door a crack to letting us see what's going on. The school counselor definitely can't solve it themselves, but they can start building bridges by finding out, you know, are there teachers here you really like or trust? Are there students that you get along with? Are there interests? You know, we have seventy plus teams or clubs. Do you have interests that we can maybe introduce you someone to? So I think it's just starting small and starting to build bridges to connections for that student. Again, like that, that's kind of why I was saying, no one of these alone is going to be effective, but that's all about the identification and connecting. And hopefully, that will intersect with some of these other initiatives, part of the connected, feel good group and just trying to get them involved in increasing levels.
Ms. Burns.
I, you, you phrased it, it is a puzzle piece in that sense. It's, and I have to say, I know there's times I brought up to Dr. Brand over past several years, things that I would like to capture because it's, it is those kids who are the outliers that are difficult to engage with. You know, you can ask them, you know, what interest, maybe try, it's, it's have them feel comfortable to take that chance. So first I want to touch upon, I'm so happy to see more translation resources to make that connection between families, students and, and the school district. I think I'm very excited. You have no idea. I also like that area of this initiative in analyzing the representation in the student recognitions because I, again, that, it, it, it is about capturing those outliers. Not that everyone needs to get an award, but I think everyone, everyone has a contributory role in their school community. And I think analyzing and looking into not only this way of recognition, but other ways of, you know what I mean? It's a puzzle, you know what I mean? Other areas, I think, would improve the engagement of those kids who are otherwise live their high school careers on the fringe of their communities. So I really, I, I really do very much like these two, those, I mean, I think they're all great, don't, not to minimize any of them, but I really do like to see a focus on those within the school this year. So thank you.
Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, I'm just going to sort of echo a little bit of what Mrs. Burns was saying about the translation, you know, I think.
I go over here.
I, you know, I, you know, the, the, you know, like if we're not, if things aren't being translated, like we're, you know, in a way, you know, as a district, you know, we're actively excluding people. You think about that family, if they don't even speak the language or read the language well, you know what I mean? Sometimes it's not, it's, it's the level of proficiency. They're already on those, on the, on the sidelines. So I think that's incredibly important. One of my questions is about the, is the weekly update translated?
Yes, I just dropped a note, I was going to follow up with this, but our new C T L for the English learner education, Ms. Billings, added a link with the translation instructions. So most Google products are easily translated, not professionally, but, you know, using A I. So, so next time you're in the weekly update, in the top right box, there's a link to translation instructions. So that shows the parent how to configure it to the preferred language. I think there's a recorded video that helps walk them through that. So it's not automatically, but it'll teach the family how to potentially set it up.
Okay, I think that'll be important for people to, to really know.
I think so. And I think not only is a parent expected to just click that link and figure it out, Ms. Billings is great about, you know, building connections with families, following up with families, kind of walking families through the needed steps to kind of get up and running, not only with the weekly update or translation, but things like Aspen and other like important things to navigate, which is not directly captured there either, but I think represents the work kind of in that area.
Okay. And one, one other question, how, I'm curious, the Lexicate, the system, is it, is it, does it work? Because I know that there, there have been other systems, I know, like in Boston, there's a, it's called Lion or something like that, and it's not always incredibly responsive or works well, but Lexicate is.
Yeah, Lexicate's great. I used it in a previous district too. They have on demand translation for pretty much every language. The, you know, more, I guess, frequency, frequently used languages varies by community, but I've never had to wait more than a couple of minutes for someone to jump on. They also have a feature where you can schedule a call in advance and that works much more reliably. So you set an appointment, you request the language, they'll send you an email when it's filled and it usually gets filled within a few minutes. The interpreters will claim the job. So that, that's pretty reliable, but I've had a really good success with the on demand service.
Great. Awesome, thank you.
I want to jump in with one more point on the translation question. I'm really, I was very glad that, to hear the outreach that Ms. Billings is doing to the families to, you know, help make sure that they're receiving information in, in the home languages. Because of course, we know who our E L students are and so, you know, we know which families this is most likely to, to apply to. And it, I mean, it comes back, I think, to something that has been brought up in other contexts at, at other meetings, just the, the idea in general that you can't just wait for people to come to you, that you have to be reaching out and going out to them. And this is true at the student level, that you can't just wait for students to come to you and just say like, oh, I'm sort of struggling or I don't understand this. It's just like you need to be soliciting the question and like making sure that it's okay, that like, no, I really need to know if you're all set up with this, if you understand this, if you're getting what you need. And that kind of, you know, proactive outreach is really important in so many aspects of a school and a school system. And I'm really glad that it's happening for this, for this particular area. I think a lot of this, the initiatives in this goal fall under broadly what we usually kind of call climate and culture. And, and so going back to sort of our topic about, you know, what kind of outcomes are we hoping to see from this? I think that what, that if we continue, which I believe we're intending to, the climate and culture survey at the end of the school year, I think this is someplace that we would look to hopefully see some of this reflected as well as in some of the panorama data and then possibly even the, the vocal survey data, which, which is the questionnaire that students take during the class as well.
Yeah, and one other data point that was really helpful in thinking about this was the equity audit. And in the equity audit, they made reference to, I forget the name of the survey that they used to collect that information. I don't know that that's replicable because it was such a big endeavor, but, you know, there were some pride, connectedness and inclusiveness gaps identified in the equity audit. And so using a similar tool or questionnaire to see where we're at years later might be, you know, on that list as well.
Just real quick, not to get too far into the weeds, but you talked about sending out the update and having the translate option. I've interacted with some of those things in my work life and oftentimes it will translate the content really well, but if there are like hyperlinks and things, those don't necessarily get translated super well, so that could potentially be important.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you.
Roll cats.
Roll cats. Thank you.
Catching on.
I thought you were going to sit over there. I was so confused.
I'd like to introduce our new guest, the superintendent.
Right.
All right, next we have the preliminary budget presentation for the fiscal year twenty five, school department budget. Dr. Rand.
We can do this again. I felt like we just did this last year.
Seems like last week, yeah. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. And there, there is a presentation that accompanies this. It is that time of the year, it just does seem like it maybe just happened, but we are again at the point where we are pleased to be able to share with the school committee and the community a glimpse of what our preliminary budget looks like for the fiscal year twenty five, wrap your head around that twenty four, twenty five school year. This is a timeline that has been in place for many, many years, certainly my time here in the district and far before in talking with Paul. And this is a long process, as you know, but obviously a very important one as we, you know, pull together our thinking around the resources that seem most appropriate and necessary to run the district. Of course, budget is one of the foremost priorities of you as a school system. So this is the big picture view, preliminary budget, it's deliberately termed that. Obviously, there's a lot of challenge in trying to predict what our needs will be so many months ahead. There's also a challenge in recognizing where the town lies in terms of their ability to support a department budget. And I'll talk about that in a little bit later. There is no question to, to me as your superintendent, and I think I'll speak on behalf of the central office leadership team, that this is a challenging time to operate any organization. I think we probably all can recognize that. If you're a owner of a home, you know that. Inflation is driving up costs and with that, of course, schools and programs and services. There are so many, there are so many things that are woven into the, the school, a school budget, subscriptions to services, just as one singular example. And we see those prices that go up all the time, just as used to homeowner. That really is impacting school budgeting from, from our perspective. We are still contending with the, the impact of COVID on learning loss. We've obviously talked a lot about that. That won't necessarily be a foremost point of discussion in this presentation, certainly or even ones to come, but suffice it to say that COVID is not over. The impact of, on our students and families absolutely continues. It's a reality for any district anywhere. And there's no question as well that the expectations prevail in terms of, in these challenging times that so many communities across this land, I know, see public schools as without question the most important social services organization in the community. Things about connectedness, things about those kinds of supports, you know, as a community. We've talked at length about trying to add resources to support. talked at length about trying to add resources to support students and families, Family Engagement Specialist, just one of many that we have grappled with and, and really shifted the direction of school districts. All of this, we obviously have to pay for, and figure out how we do just that. So we'll start with enrollment overview. Of course, that's an important component of building our budget every single year. The following slides, try not to get too into data, or too deep into the data, but to provide you a high-level view. There still is the reality that public school enrollment across the district, from everything that I see and read, is, is shifting and changing, and there's lots of reasons and lots, lots of explanations for that. Coming out of the pandemic, there's no question that many families pursued alternative options, whether that be in private school, whether that be in homeschooling, whether that be charter schools perhaps. There's lots of statistics that are gathered around what this enrollment looks like district-wide, and the U S Department of Education tracks that, of course, it's just one of those, those vehicles to gather that information. Private school enrollment going up, those are trends that are without question, public school enrollment declining without question, particularly at the younger age levels. And so, you can see that, that's a, that's a graph on the left, that's statewide enrollment, forgive me, probably should have added Massachusetts specifically, but it has, there's seen a dramatic decline, and we've seen a decline just as lots of other districts around in, in the area as well. From last year to this school year, of course, this is an important component for us because we have class size guidelines that we have to align with, and obviously so much of our, of our staff and our workforce is, is with classroom teachers. You can see an overview of fluctuations or changes from last year, fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24. Just as a reminder, we use October 1st as the official enrollment, that's what we're on, on record with, with the Department of Education, and Paul works very hard to track these numbers and make sure that they, they tie out as best as we can. And, and you can see where we are, the total enrollment pre K to 12, and it's, it's certainly true that this could have changed in the last week or, or last couple of weeks if a student moved in or a student moved out, but based upon October 1st enrollment, overall as a, as a district, we are down 27 students, but you can see some of the other variations throughout the school system, some, some level down, middle school is up, we have a bubble that's making its way through from fifth to sixth grade, so that's been pushed, that's pushed up the enrollment at middle school, for example, in comparison to last year. Mr. Gendron talked about this earlier, Wilmington High School enrollment, of course, it's not lost upon our team, that there's lots of interest in what that looks like as the high school, we've talked at length about this, I don't intend to do, to do that extensively tonight, but retention rate is something that we use that term to track. How many students stay within the school system from eighth to ninth grade? Mr. Gendron had a slightly different number, adjusted number, there could be some explanation for that, but I think the big picture takeaway is, it's over 70%, and it's also the highest level of retention rate in the last four years. For anyone who, you know, is, is interested in this, and again, I know there's been a lot of focus and conversation, if you were to take a look at the retention rate, of which we have for the last decade plus, this is not a new story for Wilmington, we have continually seen students, a good number of students not make their way to ninth grade for a whole host of reasons. This is not a new trend of development, it's, it's more than a decade, I think 15 years plus is what I've seen. Students returning to Wilmington High School, you heard Mr. Gendron talk about that, and we're, we think that there's lots of reasons for that, it's not just about the Shawshank Tech School, but there is no escaping the fact that we've seen the largest number of students, as I understand it, in this catchment of kids returning back, it's fair to say, certainly from other schools, whether that be private or, or homeschooling, whatever, but a good number from Shawshank Tech have returned. The retention rate, I think, is the big, the story there, and you can see these numbers in this chart that shows the retention rate, I know your, the question might be, well, why is it over 100%? And, you know, it's because that has seen growth over, over, over the time period. So, an important, an important data point that we watch, I won't, won't go through all of these, but as is always the case, this is a profile view of what the history looks like, tenure enrollment trends in the district, for those that really want to kind of dig into this and understand this, Paul works and his team works hard to pull this together. This is the official numbers from, from Desi, again, and our on-record reporting for them. And then enrollment, if you want to certainly get into that, exactly what was the snapshot of October 1st, and that's what this, this slide captures there, by grade level and across, of course, of course, our schools. There is, there's no question, though, that as we think about the, the year ahead and planning for next year, there's, there's one important thing to reconcile, and that is that, well, the enrollment, and that is inclusive of our district, is declining slightly, and it continues to, there is no escaping the fact that there's another very real emerging trend, and that is that the, the student population that we, and I would probably be safe to say, all school districts are experiencing, and that is the challenges that come with educating many of our students. In 2021, 2021 school year, for the first time in history, more than half of Massachusetts' public school students were considered high-needs, and there's an actual formal definition for that, and I share this definition with you that comes from the Department of Education here in Massachusetts. There's three categories that a student may fall into that constitutes the definition of a high-need student, that is, an English-language learner, differently-abled students, as well as economically disadvantaged, shouldn't say as well, but or. And if you are to take a look at the Massachusetts data, you'll see that I believe that that number is around 55% right now for public school students in the state that fall into one of those three categories. And so, of course, that reality brings in and of itself some additional challenges often to try and be met within the public environment. And there's no escaping, again, the fact that we're, we're mirroring that trend. To provide you a little bit more detailed insight in terms of what this is actually looking like in the Wilmington Public Schools, this is data from the Department of Education, Massachusetts Department of Education, I won't go through all of these, but three-year, three-year numbers percentage-wise, what you can see, low-income students, we are hovering, we've, you know, it fluctuates and can from year to year, but approximately 15% of our student population is by definition low-income, students with disabilities, we are hovering around the 17, just under 18% mark. High-needs population, you can see for the 2022, 23, again, I need to point that out, that's last school year, just under 30% of our student population is high-needs, and some other data points there. And so, again, the, the larger reality is that student needs are changing, and despite the fact that enrollment may be declining, student needs are changing and becoming more challenging for a variety of reasons to, to reach and to support. This next slide certainly is another, more hones in specifically, Mr. Gendron talked about this earlier around translation, but our English-language learning, just wanted to take a few moments to kind of highlight that, because I think that this really is a great snapshot of, of translation service needs and, and other, other realities that are unfolding. You can see here the numbers of students as of, as of this month, students with a home language other than English or in addition to English, we have 151 students for whom there's another language spoken at home. Active English learners, 55 students in total, I think you can see the trend there, and that is, it's growing, you can see over the last number of years, and we fully anticipate that this is only going to continue, and so this is obviously important to watch. This is a interesting snapshot of some of the other languages that are, our students speak, it's quite a range, as you can see, and I know some folks may find that difficult to believe, but it's, these are actual languages indeed that are spoken by many households throughout Wilmington. So the preliminary budget, where does it stand? Personnel, of course, is a driving force for our, our overall budget, as it always is, and, and as it is for, for all public school districts, I'm sure. Negotiated contracts for all of our bargaining units are in place going into fiscal year 25, which is a, is a good and important place to be for us. The total increase to the budget that relates to those employee groups or those contracts specifically, steps in lanes, just a little over $900,000. Does that make you uncomfortable when I don't read the exact number? Okay, I should have asked.
It's not twitching yet. I'll let you know when it twitches.
Salary increases, just a little bit over $1 million. Longevity, and that's called that specifically because that is part of the contract that you have as a school committee with some of our, for our employee groups, $20,000. There are always salary replacements and reductions, just as a note, of course, as a reminder, we use the acronym F T E as Full-Time Equivalent Staff, and there's always some adjustments that are happening within the overall budget, and going into next year is no different. There's been some additions, there's been some replacements, there's been some reductions. English-language learning program needs definitely is on the rise, and that is hopefully for you captured in the growth that we are seeing there, and, and we're trying to keep pace with that. Overall, the personnel included in the fiscal year 25 budget as it stands right now before you in this preliminary place is 489.15 F T Es, a slight reduction of .2 F T Es from, from this year going forward. This is a snapshot of what this breakdown looks like of just approximately 500, not quite, of full-time equivalent staff, so an awful lot of people to help support the programs and services across eight schools in our district and all of the, the programs that we offer. With no surprise, the largest group is our general education teachers at almost 165, and you can see from there, educational assistants, almost 90, to support our, our students in our various programs and such throughout our schools, special education teachers, 71.2, specialists, 64.55, and so on. And I just thought, an interesting snapshot to provide you with a sort of an overview of what makes up that 489 F T Es and how is that broken out over, over eight schools. If I may, just talk a little bit more about the English-language learning, because, again, it's, it's, is representative of an increase that we're, we're grappling with, and I think that at the outset, it's, it's also important to just note, this is one of so many examples where trying to provide support to our students across so many schools is more and more challenging, in particular, the six elementary schools. We've talked at length, and I know before about this, with special education programming and the challenges of having to replicate programs in the smaller schools as opposed to if consolidated under one, under one roof, this is another programmatic example where it's just hard to do over so many smaller schools, and it's not efficient, and we have to grapple with that, and sometimes just adding more staff just to, for that reality, we obviously can't have staff always traveling between so many schools, if that was the case, they wouldn't be in front of students. So, so it's just, it's a reality, and we do the very best that we can, but it's not efficient, and it's not as effective as ideally we could if we were under one roof. But that being said, it's become clear to us under Ms. Elliott, Ms. Billings' leadership that we, we've fallen behind in terms of the appropriate level of staffing, and Christine, you can certainly talk to more about this if you want, but, and we need to make up for that, and then the rise in numbers has pressed upon that very need. There are a certain number of minutes that students are supposed to receive in terms of instruction, and, and again, with the growth in numbers, that has been, become a strain organizationally. And so that's, that's an area of focus that's emerging as we plan this budget for next year. And I think, is there one out of order? Yeah. And so the, the highlight there, and I'll go back just a second, Paul, so the, the budget for fiscal year 25 does include additional .6 F T E and translation services. We have sort of cobbled together that, those services, but we know we need to build a budget line, and, and that is not, that is not, that's an accurate number, we, we believe that 45,000 is what's necessary, again, so many students, so many families, so many schools, and we have an obligation legally to make sure that specific key documents are able to be translated, and that's, doesn't come for free, so we need to build, we built that into the budget. And so, I'm gonna go back to personnel. Want to take it from there?
Thank you. The preliminary budget personnel changes for FY '24 budget, we had 489.35 F T Es. During this school year, we had to add an educational assistant, we had a rising ninth grader who, who didn't have a one-to-one with, so we had to add that, and then, as Glenn mentioned, the ESL teachers, we added .6. For the start of the FY '25 school year, we anticipate being at 490.95. We had to, we're anticipating increasing one staff member at one of us schools due to contractual guidelines for class sizes, and there's 2.8 F T Es for educational assistance that were removed from the budget. We have students aging out, who no longer need a one-to-one, and a couple of unfilled positions, that was determined that we don't need to fill those, so. With all that, the FY '25 budget preliminarily, we're at 489.15 F T Es, a reduction of .2 F T Es. As Glenn mentioned before, the salary changes are made up of a bunch of different categories, so the FY '24 budget was 37.6 million. Superintendent mentioned, stepped the lanes, little over 900,000, new positions, 154,000. Salary increases, a million, almost 1.1, a little less than 1.1 million, replacements reductions, 305,000, and reduction in longevity, $20,000 increase. Total increase for salaries, $1,805,553, bringing the total of 39.4 million, or a 4.8% increase. Also note that in these numbers, if you remember last year, we moved some general ed tutus from one of our ESER grants to the local budget, but we left two in the ESER grant, that grant is expiring at the end of this fiscal year, so we brought those two positions back to the local budget. So we didn't, we didn't cut those, we kept those positions in the local budget.
Of course, as a people business, the, the bulk of this budget is wrapped up in the people that are working our schools and, and offices and classrooms every day. There are also, though, a number of non-salary requirements that just are necessary to operate a school district, and by non-salary, we, we roll up sort of into this collective category exactly what those are, and, and I think it probably, might surprise, might surprise folks sort of to, sort of grapple with some of these numbers collectively, but I think it's, it's important to provide our, our community and use a committee with a snapshot of exactly what makes up these non-salary expenses. In some total, non-salary expenses in, in this budget plan exceed $10 million, and those are made up with a variety of categories, the largest is out-of-district education expenses. We have a legal obligation, as do all public school districts, to provide an appropriate education for all of our students, some of our students have additional, additional needs that unfortunately require them to receive that education out of district. When you combine tuitions and transportation for those students, it's just a little over $7.4 million collectively, a large number, but an important number, and again, a legal obligation. Curriculum instruction and professional development, the work of teaching and learning, obviously, we're continually making sure that we have the appropriate resources and tools for our teachers to use in their classrooms. Budget plan for next year is just a little over, includes a little over $500,000 to support that. Information technology, it's true that an awful lot of technology items are included in the capital plan, you saw that profile last meeting, but there's a whole host of other things that are, fall into information technology, subscriptions, subscription services, that tool that Mr. Gendron talked about earlier, to send out his email blast every Sunday as an example, just one of many, so that's also a large number, 448,000. Special education costs outside of the out-of-district education are significant, they're growing continuously as well, almost $850,000. Student transportation, of course, we talked about that earlier this year in district, student transportation to support the 16 or now 17 school buses, in next year's budget plan, a little over $1.3 million. Athletic from the, athletics from the local budget, just a little under 200, 172,000 specifically. Office supplies, school supplies, takes an awful lot, of course, to operate our, our various offices throughout the district, collectively, that rolls up to a little over $400,000. We, we pay the electrical charges for the operations of our schools, that went up, or projected to go up 10% for next year, is what we've been advised, and so that is a little over $650,000 as part of this budget. And then a whole host of other operational services, too many to list, but such things- as photocopiers, legal services, translation services, collectively rolls up to just a little bit under 175,000. So, again, also a significant number. And that pressure that I talked about at the outset, these numbers keep going up and up and up, and taking obviously more of the resources that roll up in terms of the overall operating budget. Fiscal year 25 preliminary budget, non-salary changes?
Yep. So, the non-salary changes, we have a list of some of the categories of expenses that have increased. We had a $10 million, $28,000 non-salary budget for FY '24, some changes that we're seeing. Transportation, general ed, education, athletics, up about 70,000. Addition of a bus, as we mentioned before, it's about $78,660. Electricity, we've been informed that it may be going up 10%, and equates to about a $77,000 increase, a little over 10%. Technology and classroom technologies up about 17,000. Out-of-district tuitions, we anticipate an 8% increase on tuition rates and a 6.5% increase for collaboratives, which increases about $63,000 in our special ed tuition costs. Again, the tuition piece, there's students that age out of the program, change programs and so forth, so it's not really taking last year's number times 8% or 6% because there's other movements and so forth, but that's the increase. Out-of-district transportation, we're going to reduce it by $50,000. We looked at the last three, two or three years of actual spending in our transportation for out-of-district students, and our budget has been higher than our actuals, so we feel confident that we can reduce that a little bit. Other student activities, student support services activities, up another $22,000. ESL translation interpretation services, we're showing this increase of about $44,000. This year, we decided to account for translation interpretation services separately in a separate line item. In the past, ESL, CTL would put an amount of money for translation in her budget. We pulled that out and put it into a different line item, as well as the Office of Student Support Services spent quite a bit of money for translation service, services that in the past was charged to other spend-related services. So, we decided to pull it out of the air and move it into one line item. Textbooks, library supplies, up about 21,000. Furniture and equipment, about $13,000, $14,000. As we mentioned, the copier leases up, there's a few leases that, a few units that their lease expires during the beginning of FY '25. Membership dues are about, are up about 5,800. Maintenance repairs down about 11,000, and part of the reason for that is, in last year's budget, we had a stage current at the middle school that that project was completed, so we pulled that out of the budget. School office and other supplies up about 17,000. Athletic supplies and contracted services, a little less than 5,000. HR expenses up a little bit, and curriculum, and curriculum supplies down a bit. And then, our other changes, just a small amount. So, the total increase from FY '24 to FY '25 preliminary budget is $263,037, or a 2.62% increase on non-salary budget, in this preliminary budget. So, in total, the FY '25 preliminary budget shows, as we mentioned, a change in salary of 1.8 million, non-salary of 263,000, or a total increase of $2,068,590, or a percentage increase of 4.34% at this point in the preliminary budget.
Capital requests, we'll go through them here. They're included for reference, but you recall that we took some time last, during our last meeting, to profile these, and this reflects what you've seen before. This has already gone to the town, I think, as you might recall, for their consideration for what we think are necessary budget capital requests through fiscal year '29. So, just, we're almost wrapping this up, a few things to sort of close on. As I said at the outset, operationally, to operate our school district, arguably like any others, costs have increased substantially. They keep going up. You recall, when we had this meeting about a year ago, we were forecasting, and we had to, build into this, a 14% increase in our out-of, up to a 14% increase in our out-of-district special education tuitions last year. That is not 14% this year, it's 8%, but again, still a sizable amount on the magnitude of what we're talking about. That's just one example, but I think it is, it's a relevant example. There's no escaping that. Challenges of the pandemic, certainly, as mentioned again at the outset, continue. And with that, we're working hard to try and build a budget that are the increases that the town can support. That's a challenge, for sure. Cost of goods and services rising certainly leads to some downward pressure. We work hard to try and balance that. Certainly, this preliminary budget plan does not capture or reflect all of the requests that could be here, or even those that were made, but there is a recognition that there has to be a limit, and a limit that, again, with the hope that the town can support to provide, you know, fiscally the support for our services. But that reality is, leads to largely sort of maintaining the status quo. And that's not to say that there's not some, some things that are in here, a new program, for example, under curriculum and instruction, but it's a program that we need to deliver programs in classrooms. So, I think that that's just an important piece to keep in mind here. To give you a snapshot of some of the other items that were not, or are not being recommended, but were put forth from some of our leadership team and such across the district. Building-based substitutes, we have classroom substitutes, but there was a recommendation to consider having a dedicated building-based substitute, a consistent person, not just one person can fill all of the vacancies that we have every day, but there's benefits to having a dedicated building-based substitute as the first line of sort of response, if you will, when staff call out. And we recognize the value in that, but we also recognize that that would be a substantial increase, and so, at this time, it's not being recommended here as part of the plan. Additional professional development time is something that we always struggle with, not having enough of. I would love to include a budget, a calendar that would include additional professional development time. This proposal does not. That comes with a cost, and that number's probably maybe a little bit low, but at least $150,000 to add an additional day in which we might not have students in session, but staff would be. Public relations support, you know, we're grappling all the time with the, trying to thread the needle and communication, what's appropriate to share, how we share it, how we consistently approach this. We don't have a PR department, I've talked about this before, some districts are starting to move in that direction, or at least partial support. I'd love to see that in the future, but right now, it doesn't seem to be the time. And there's additional administrator for athletics, this is part of a larger conversation that I think we, we need to have in terms of a program review, and so, I wanted to share a little bit of insight in terms of some of those things with you. So, what's next in terms of the budget planning? First item here, actually, it's been revised. The temporary town manager's, we were originally going to meet with him at the end of this week, that's been pushed off into the first week of January, though, now. But from there, we will follow with what is obviously a fairly tight schedule, but one that we need to align with. We have a budget subcommittee right after the new year when we get back. The recommended budget presentation is scheduled for you as a committee on January the 24th, here in this room. Town manager's budget presentation will be scheduled, as we understand it, for January the 29th, and our budget hearing is right now scheduled for February the 14th, something that, as you know, we have to approach under state law. And then, from there, moving on to town meeting in May. Just before opening up to questions, I want to just take this opportunity, and there's a lot of work that goes into a few slides here. Thanks to our school and district leaders who, almost as school begins, they get the dreaded email that we need to know from them what it is that they want for fiscal resources for the following year. I have been in that seat, and I know that's no easy thing. Thanks to Lauren Selly, who is our Assistant Director of Administration Finance, who's here, I know who works hard with Paul to kind of roll all of this up, and other members of our leadership team here tonight. It's a lot of work, it's obviously critical, though, to try and identify the resources that we think are best necessary to support our services and programs. And so, with that, happy to take questions. Thank you.
Mr. Gendron?
First of all, thank you, again, the same team, for the amount of effort that goes into this is amazing, and it is a tremendous amount of effort. I do think it's really important that people appreciate that this is a level budget, which, when we talk about what we want from our schools, this isn't, the percentages reflected here don't reflect a significant growth in program or change in program, this is to maintain where we are. So, in some ways, it's kind of the minimum, and that's not a great way to say it, but it is largely driven by contractual things. Out of the 10 million that's non-employee costs, a huge portion of that is driven by out-of-state, and that's a very important point. Last year, the 14%, not out-of-state, out-of-district, sorry, the 14%, this year, 8%. But there is an important reflection on that, where Wilmington has had a practice for years to work as hard as we can, appropriate for the children, appropriate for the district, to keep as many in district as possible. That 14% would have been more last year to our budget, and the 8% would be more this year. So, we are, the programmatic effect and the benefit to the students does have a positive benefit to the budget as well, which is, in years past, we were as many as 70 and 80 students out of the district, and now, we're down into the mid-50s. That would be a much, much larger number, and there's no way we would be at 2-point-something percent on the non-employee costs, non-staff costs, if that wasn't where it is. And it's, and it's the right thing for the students as well. So, it's, it's important for folks to realize. And the other piece I wanted to touch on was, when we talk about high needs and then talk about special education, there is also a large range of other associated services we provide to the students that are beyond specifically identified special education needs. And so, when we talk about the staffing, part of what I would want to highlight is that we talk about general education, then we talk teachers, and then educational assistance on page 16, special education teachers and specialists, there's a huge portion of educational assistance time and specific staff that are dedicated to special education or other education for students that have higher needs of different forms, and even as well as a specialist. So, when people look at the budget, and you had a very good slide last year that talked about the trend of those three categories, I'd actually almost like to see that trend as well, with educational assistance broken out. Clearly, at the pre-K and K level, there are educational assistants who are in the classroom, general education classrooms, but most of the other educational assistants are not general education, education assistants. And so, it's a really important factor, and that trend line over the last decade that you showed, would show that group is part of the, where that growth is happening there, is also related to what we do need to provide to the students around that sort of educational services. And so, I think that's an important thing for everyone to realize when we look at the enrollment piece and show, like you did last year, the changing makeup of the enrollment. That's another aspect of the staffing that would highlight that change as well, and help people understand sometimes how those numbers do work in opposite directions over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burns?
So, I think Steve really broke it down. So, basically, and generally speaking, the cost of delivering FAPE, Free and Appropriate Education, has risen, and I think especially, it is, as Stephen had pointed out, although the enrollment numbers are a different factor, the high needs factor really kind of supersedes where the cost is built into our, into this proposed budget. And that's where it comes from. And, you know, to deliver free and appropriate education, there's so many different multiple facets, and so many different areas and levels, does not, and I have to speak to it, but does not help that going into this, into next year, we're dealing with another unfunded mandate as it pertains to the new IEP format that our student support services are now undertaking and revamping. And I do anticipate a cost factor associated with this, this new IEP process, which is also going to impact, I think, our bottom line, but is necessary because the state needs their data, right? So, I worry because, you know, I, we did, I walked with Paul through the nine C cuts-back from 2016, which were unexpected, and it was, and I thought you were, you know, I thought this was the high tens part of your year, and to have to go through it a second time was enough, you poor guy. But I just, I worry about the, I think this is a solid preliminary budget, I really do. And I can see with all of the discussions and all the elements that we speak to at our meeting, and the different aspects of our operations, of our schools, of our curriculum, of our staff, I can see how that translates into the line items within this preliminary budget. I worry about state reimbursements, the circuit breaker, yeah, those elements that we rely on to support our budget, as well as just the fiscal state of, the rumors that we're hearing, the potential concerns about the state budget going into the, you know, the next fiscal year, which is always, can throw all this good work aside and having to revamp. And it's, I feel a little bit more anxious than usual because it's, I've never heard from our state reps to say, hey, look, it's going to be slim pickings budgetarily. I've never heard that from our representatives before, which is concerning. I know what there's, they are just trying to be transparent in their, you know, with their constituents, but that concerns me, because I think public education should be one line item in the state budget that should not be looked at for cuts. I think we've spent decades, not to get off the tangent, forgive me, but we've spent decades fighting for appropriate funding for our public schools, and we're still playing catch-up. And to have the public schools used as a, an element of where they can look, be looked at for budgetary cuts when there's such a need, and as it was stated in your presentation, Dr. Brand, that we have, we're more than just learning centers, we're social service institutions now. And considering where the state of this country and the Commonwealth is going, that's not going to change anytime too soon, and it's, I think, will only expand. And that is so entwined with offering our children and any student that comes into our community and into our schools, a free and appropriate education to meet their needs of learning. So, it's, it is a vicious circle, but I just, I want to thank you because I think it really is a solid start, and I hope that the town manager and Vincom and the town itself can support this request.
Mr. Fenley?
So, Dr. Brand, thank you, and to the team and everybody for the time and energy and effort that goes into this. I appreciate the, sort of the glimpse and understanding, this is the preliminary presentation. I'll save most of my questions for when we get closer to a final budget presentation, but just a couple of very quick things. If we know off the top of our heads, and if we don't, that's fine. And Alice, maybe you know, $7.4 million for out-of-district students. How many students is that?
57.
Thank you. I knew you, I knew you would know.
And so, it's tuition and interpretation.
Right. Okay. So, it's entirely feasible that I didn't do my math right, but if we are saying 39.4 million and change for salaries proposed for next year, and 7.4 million for out-of-district students, is 94 roughly percent of our budget?
Yeah, there is an offset, a circuit breaker offset, you see in your budget, that is, tuitions ultimately get charged there, and we show it as a, an offset. So, I think it's, so it reduces that $7 million, if you will, in the local budget net.
So, I think it's fair to say, though, we're still over 90% of our operating budget on those two line items. So, you know, you're looking at roughly 3 million, a little bit more, is what we spend basically to operate the school district, once you get away from salaries and out-of-district placements. So, I just, I think it's important, as we start this process again, for folks, Dr. Brand, you said it, this is, this is a people business. We are, you know, our teachers, our staff, our students, like, this is the overwhelming We are, you know, our teachers, our staff, our students, like, this is the overwhelming majority of where these funds go. And so this is important. You just, MJ, you just said it, this is, this is almost non-negotiable. So I just, I know there's a lot more work to be done, and I appreciate the work that's been done. I just want folks who are tuning into this process to realize just how much actually goes into this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McColl?
Yep. Thanks. Just want to echo some of my colleagues' comments. Thank you for everything you put together, a lot of effort that went into this, very clear to understand, too. I want to follow up some on what Mr. Turner was saying regarding slide 16, that kind of showed the breakdown of the general education staff and the kind of educational assistant and special ed staff. Yeah, when I looked at these numbers, what really popped out in me was it's almost the same number of FTE for general education and educational assistance and special ed teachers. And something that could be interesting is that a future meeting potentially is kind of breaking down what those salary costs may be for those groups. So you kind of can show everyone, like, because we're delivering this level of service, we need to invest this amount in that kind of staff level, or something like that. So I thought that was quite surprising. Another question I have is, if you can go to the, please go to the facility improvements and repair slide.
The capital?
Yeah.
Uh, sorry. That one there?
No, the one that we need to talk with the town about.
Uh, which one is, I'm sorry.
I think that was the one where, you know, it was like getting the furniture and everything like that.
Oh, capital.
Yeah.
Capital?
Yep.
That one there?
26?
Yeah, I think that was that one. Yep. Okay. So just kind of more for the community's benefit, and maybe for people in this group that don't quite know the process, is with these projects that we have going to the town, like, if we're going to be investing in capital, and then also getting new paint, or fixing up some of the buildings, how does that process work?
So one of the requests we make of principals essentially is to send us lists of facility repair improvements they'd like to see. I don't think there was a slide particularly for that, but I think in the budget package there might be something.
That's probably where I saw it, yeah.
So those items are just requests that we get, and I end up sending those to the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Buildings to see what they can do. And some of the items, if they're warranted, they will include them in their budget. Or if it's more capital-related, they might include that in their capital budget. And a lot of those things, they just do when they can do it, like, you know, and they have their own plan. Like, sometimes they want to paint lines on, in schoolyards.
Yeah.
Shape the lines. So that's the Department of Public Works, and they have a plan, and when they do that, every three or four years, they'll do that and so forth, and some things. And some things, public buildings, as an example, just can't get to.
Yep.
It gets lower in the priority list. But those are things that we typically, the school department, do not put in our budget. It's kind of comes from those two departments, and we kind of work with them. And they do, I think, a couple of the items that were on that list have already been done. So, you know, the DPW's taken care of a couple of those things already. So I think that's kind of how it works. So it's, you know, we kind of ask them to do those things, or to prioritize those things, and they do so. And if something's really critical, the safety issue, they're on it right away. The principal will contact them directly and get it rectified.
So if I understand you correctly, it's, we'll put in a request as the district, kind of talk with the town, but ultimately it comes out of the town budget to then improve some of the infrastructure here in that way. While I think what the slide that's up is kind of more, this is the capital equipment that we, as the district, are looking to put into our budget. So that's where it's kind of different in that way, right?
Right. Yeah, the vast majority of the capital items that we are ever requesting are technology, and with the exception of, I guess you could argue, electricity, it's really the only expense that the school budget has to support the overall physical operation of the facilities.
Yeah. Okay. Great. And then one more question. So we were talking a lot here about how this is kind of like just keeping the lights on, you know, keeping the status quo in a way. So I guess my question to you would be, if let's say we can get more funds, let's say, you know, the budget could be increased than the initial request that you had, and very conservative and prudent request, what would you want to, where do you think you wanted to play those funds? What would you want to spend it on?
It's a wish list.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's the fun part of budget planning, right? Is you get the wish list.
I certainly didn't mean to, it's a great question, and I think there's, in no particular order, I mean, I referenced, I guess, professional development, right, as one. I mean, we have, we have essentially two full professional development days. Certainly, we have early release time, but that's a challenge for us, again, so many schools and offsetting times, never does anything align. So again, in no particular order, additional days for professional development. We, I remember well when we looked at other school districts around, and there are some that have two days, such as ours, but many that have more. So that would be one. You know, furnishings, you know, there's more to just the desk and chair to support learning in a classroom. And with the exception of this facility, I would even argue the middle school that is 23 years old, there's so many advantages now to modern furnishings that can be more conducive to support student learning. We don't, we really don't have a budget line to support that. So that would be another area. Instructional coaches. You know, we have instructional leadership, but again, it's thin, and it doesn't go into the whole realm of instructional coaches that many school districts do provide and offer to support. You know, a school principal's job is one thing, it's operating a building, we have assistant superintendent, and we have some other folks that are teachers and part-time, sort of help support the overall, but it's not coaching. So, you know, I could go on, but there are definitely other areas. And so I appreciate the comments earlier. I mean, level service, sort of keeping things running and status quo, but there are certainly many other things that I know could have an impact on the work that we try to do every day.
Yeah, no, thanks. So if I can maybe paraphrase a bit, investing in our staff, right, which then in turn will benefit our students, and improving the overall environment where our students and staff work, right? And then that's going to be kind of back to my previous question about beyond the capital, but more working with the town to, you know, improve our facilities the way they are and updating them. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
So I thought it was, and I know we've said this a few times, I'm not going to really say it, but, you know, essentially, you know, we're not asking for, you know, in this budget, what I see is there's not an ask for anything more. It's not the wish list in any shape or form. It's, we're asking for more money because the cost of things are increasing. And I know it gets, it's kind of a separate conversation, but I don't want it to be lost on here, and Dr. Brand, I think you did touch on it, but when we're operating all of these different schools, that increases all these sorts of costs. So in some ways, it can seem kind of counterintuitive that if we spend money on building schools, that's going to actually save us money. Because every year that we push off building schools, it's increasing that. You think about a lot of the, our goals, right, where you want to have, you know, it's not just operating the building, what you touched on, it's the staff, right? You can't have staff always traveling between all these buildings, so you have the same position, you have to hire two people for, just based on the fact that there's the geography of getting from place to place. Talk about PD days, right, when you have all these schools and these different times, it makes, you know, so I just, I don't want us to forget that. Part of any of this, any time we're talking about this budget, I think it's important to remember that one of our biggest obstacles is the fact that we operate all of these schools. And consolidation, while it can be a hard hit now, is going to save us money, like, in the long run.
Mm-hmm. So we had a presentation tonight for the high school school improvement plan. We've seen the elementary school, school improvement plans. We have a new strategic plan that's, you know, in the first year being in effect. You know, we approved superintendent goals for you at the start of the school year. Where in the budget would you say specifically we're investing in those types of goals? Because, you know, it's, we can make all the plans we want, but you need, part of the execution of those plans is giving them the financial resources that they need. And so I'm kind of thinking everything from your superintendent goals about, you know, evaluating the instructional leadership to, I mean, you know, the translation services, which of course you covered. This is like the translation meeting, it's like, comes up, it's coming up everywhere. But I would like to kind of like think about that we are, it's kind of about like, almost just like walking the talk, that just like, we say that these are the goals that we want to aim for, and in what ways are we supporting them in different areas of the budget?
Greg, thank you for the question. So there is a relatively small allocation of funds identified as strategic plan, I forget the exact amount.
Fifty, 50,000.
And that is something that we have carried as, within the previous year's budgets. But that's a earmark that goes towards, you know, and so in the scheme of, again, so many staff, so many buildings, so many programs, it's, it's some allocation for sure, but we use that where and as things emerge for sort of broadly or loosely related to strategic planning. So with your support, it's, again, it's in this budget plan, wasn't highlighted on a slide tonight, but it is again in here. But, you know, that gets consumed fairly quickly if there's a guest speaker that might align with something in a strategic initiative that we're looking to support, those kind of things. I don't know if you want to expand on that.
No, and I would just add that we have taken all of the action steps in the timeline within the strategic plan and looked, you know, kind of mapped them out over the next couple of years to see where those bumps will be. And I think in this first round, a lot of the funding is really to help establish some of this committee work and different things that we'll be doing, maybe related to stipends for teachers participating on committees. But I do see that when we get some of the results of, for example, Dr. Brand's goals around establishing recommendations around staffing models for, you know, instructional support, those kinds of things, we will be seeing those more, I think, a larger, you know, proposal in the budget moving forward. But we did map it out timeline-wise, so we feel like we're in an okay place for this upcoming cycle, based on what the action steps are in our plan.
Okay. And the second thing that I want to just kind of put out is, again, the transportation issue, and specifically the bus issue and bus capacity. Now, I know this was discussed in more detail two meetings ago, which I unfortunately was not able to attend, and the, you know, as we know, the decision was to, you know, maintain the 17th bus, but adding an 18th bus was deemed essentially kind of of de minimis help. Like, yes, it would do something, but not enough benefit to justify adding an 18th bus to the, bus to the fleet. And I can certainly appreciate that reasoning, because I've, as I've already mentioned, there are no solutions, only trade-offs. And, you know, if you're going to, you know, spend $78,000 on an 18th bus, that $78,000 you don't have to spend on something else, in which maybe we get more value from. But despite all that, I have some misgivings about feeling that we don't have any play in the joints, that we're kind of like right on the edge of our capacity, and we already know that we got, you know, kind of surprised this year about some of the things that we found. And I think that we ended up being really fortunate in that that extra bus was able to smooth out so many of the difficulties, plus a lot, I mean, obviously, we did a million other things, too, as far as, you know, working and playing with the roots, and I don't want to say that like the extra bus was the only thing that did this. And I also want to acknowledge that we know so much more now about what it's like to transport students to these schools under these new start times, that we can, you know, from the very beginning, plan differently for next year than what we had to do this year, which was, you know, kind of our best guess, and then make adjustments on the fly. So I do, I want to acknowledge all those things that suggest that we'll be in a better, in a better place next year. But again, I think that we were pretty lucky this year that, first of all, the bus was available so quickly, because there was a time when we really didn't think necessarily that we could, even if we wanted to, write a check to someone, that there wouldn't be a bus and a driver available. And it turned out that we were fortunate that one was available fairly quickly. And then also because of some savings that were realized after we had finalized the FY24 budget, we were actually able to add it, like, we were able to find the money in the budget. So, you know, maybe it's not that fortunate, maybe those things don't align necessarily next year. And so I am a little bit uncomfortable about feeling that we're kind of just like so much on the razor's edge of capacity. Because as we've seen, you know, transportation is so fundamental that, you know, it's like, if you're not getting the kids to school, or, you know, to school on time, then it just, it wreaks havoc with all the, you know, with all of our families, not to mention the classes and the students and so forth. And so I'm, you know, as I said, you always have to be thinking about like, well, what is the likelihood that we actually need it versus what benefit we get versus where we can spend that money elsewhere? But I want to express a little bit of discomfort in case we find ourselves in a position where we really, really would love to have that extra bit of flexibility and capacity that we haven't anticipated and currently are not planning for. Other questions, other comments? All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you all.
All right, that brings us to item nine, subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee reports? Any subcommittee reports? Correspondence?
None this evening. Thank you.
All right. And then future events. So coming up, and very quickly, this will be winter break from Friday to January 1st. January 10th will be the next meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee, and then the school committee meetings, regular meetings in January, unusually back-to-back because of the budget, because of the general budget calendar, on January 17th and January 24th. Mr. Turner, any events that were, I did check?
And no. We've gotten through all of the special events of December, and so between now and early January, there are none to add. So thank you for checking.
All right, then, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and, oh.
Just quickly, the policy meeting, policy subcommittee will be meeting tomorrow morning. Just as a reminder, Mr. Fenely?
Oh, I'm aware.
All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, motion by Ms. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenely, and all in favor? All right, we are adjourned, and.
Good day.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Have a restful break.
Thank you, guys.